I think, you know, there's definitely a difference of opinion, but that wasn't illegal. I was brought to council, we discussed with you.
The city council meeting for March 2nd. Please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have the roll.
Kenny.
Here.
Gustafson.
Here.
Clistic.
Present.
Belzak.
Here.
Shower.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Vaughn.
Here.
Seven, present.
We have a quorum, takes us to questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature. This is an opportunity for someone to address the council on anything that's not on our agenda or on our agenda, so that you don't have to wait till the end of the meeting. We put this at the beginning of the meeting, so people could leave if they wanted to make some comments. Anybody like to address the council on anything? Come forward, please. Just state your name.
Sure. I'm Ron Price, and I live at 7731 Lester Lane in Darien. It's, I appreciate the opportunity to address the council tonight and at this time. I'm here, and I'd like to make a comment about the proposed sign, the digital sign, which I believe is on the agenda and up for some consideration. I attended the previous two zoning meetings, and it's nice to see a turnout of the community tonight. And I just wanted to reiterate some of the information that I provided at the zoning meetings for consideration for the general council. First, let me say that I'm not against the digital signage, I'm not against businesses, but I think it's important for us to understand that we are asking our community to accept a sign that has potential safety considerations in our community. I mean, it is one of the busiest intersections. As I said, I live on Lester Lane, which is probably, from my driveway to that intersection, is probably 150 feet. And when I look at research that has been done on digital signage, in terms of the distraction factor, of potentials to cause crashes, the most recent literature which I presented at the zoning meeting said that, that depending on the literature and the meta-analysis, that there is a potential that we could increase traffic accidents by as much as 30% in these locations. Also, one of the highest areas where digital signage, according to, again, the research, affects traffic accidents is at busy intersections. Here we have one of the busiest intersections in our community with tons of traffic. I myself have witnessed several accidents at that, at that intersection. This is in the absence of having digital signage. So I would like, just for your consideration, to think about, is this something that we need in our community at this particular intersection? I understand what's been expressed at the previous sessions, that we want to increase public service announcements, we want to have better communications with our community. I think that I wholeheartedly support that, but I'd like to ask the council to consider, is this the location where we want to have that? Couldn't it be right out in front of City Hall, which may be more appropriate? So again, I'm, I would just like to speak out, I'm not in favor of the proposed signage for safety reasons in our community, and ask for your thoughtful consideration on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? If no more, we'll move us, oh, we do have. We all know this guy.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Brian Gay, 1205 Willow Lane. This evening, I come to you in regards to the same matter regarding the digital advertising billboard that's to be placed on Plainfield and Cass Avenue. As an economic development professional, as well as a planning and zoning commissioner, I am not in favor of this sign, you know, for a few reasons. I really struggle with the need for this digital billboard, but more importantly, the question of why, in that why would we want something in, in the center that personally I don't feel fits the, the nature and the time well spent, the money well spent, in kind of developing that area? As a commissioner, as I said, I voted against the sign for the following reasons. One is that right now, the proposal from the company in which the city would be partnering with for this is a 25-year commitment. That is a sign that gives the city very little leeway in terms of approving what goes on the sign, as well as the look, feel, and everything, and that for the city council members, this is a 25-year decision, that that's going to last you for your next six terms. That's a lot. I'm going to be retired by the time this sign goes away, or potentially goes away. Second is that there was no, no traffic study data or availability to really kind of make it an informed decision. It was brought up during Planning Commission, that, asking for one of those, and because that it was not readily available, we did, the committee did move to not consider that as part of it, because it would be slowing down the system, or in this case, the decision-making process. There was also a request regarding feasibility study regarding human factors, driving conditions. I did check with a few individuals, and while most of the data, as Mr. Price had mentioned, not specific to this case here, but a lot of cases, the data that is available is for much larger signs that are located on freeways and don't exactly pertain to this instance here. So again, just another lack of information or data to, to support or deny the request. And then finally, in this case here, this is a 25, you know, this is a, a sign right at the, at the corner in a proposed, you know, Main Street area here, with the idea of allowing for additional businesses to advertise, for the city to advertise. So I totally understand and completely agree with the idea of dissemination of information, but in this case too, I think we're giving too many opportunities to outside factors. The company, when asked, you know, how they would discourage businesses from outside of Darien to advertise on the sign, that we were told that businesses likely on their others do not advertise if they're outside of a one-mile range. During this meeting, I think in the data that they're available, and as companies and businesses become more sophisticated in terms of their marketing decisions, they would find the sign very, you know, very interesting. You had main competitors, two businesses, just within Brookhaven, within Darien at that intersection, just outside of a mile and a half. So to say that businesses outside of a mile are not going to choose this location, well, they're just choosing it a mile and a half or two miles outside of that. So I think this would be an opportunity, especially with the city of Darien on the sign, it would just, one, from an optics, look bad, but two, in allowing businesses outside of Darien to advertise, so, thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Anyone else? It moves us to the approval of our minutes for February 18th, 2020. You have a motion to approve. Alderman Shower, second by Alderman Kenny. Any changes, updates, corrections? If none, the roll.
Shower.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Takes us to receiving of communications. Do any of the aldermen have communications they'd like to share with the council tonight? Alderman Vaughn?
Thanks, Mayor. I did receive communications from Brian Gray concerning the sign, so I just want to make mention of that, that he left me a message and everything that he said here tonight, so.
What else? Okay, if nothing else from under communications, takes us to the mayor's report, and I'm going to move from this location down to the front.
When I first conceived of the idea of developing a recognition for residents who enrich our community through their unselfish commitment to the public good, I had tonight's recipient in mind. She is a unique individual, who like so many who give of their time and effort, asks for nothing in return, but the satisfaction of knowing that their work touched the lives of others in a very positive and lasting way. While her contributions have been many, she is truly known as the Arbor Day Lady, who along with others began raising our awareness of the beauty of nature and our need to return a gift to Mother Earth by adding beautiful trees to our landscape. As this program progressed, she joined forces with the Gift to Carl Foundation as they recognized individuals who had been taken from us, who contributed to this community. Darien Community Park, Westwood Park, and other Darien parks are now adorned with trees planted and maintained in memory of our departed loved ones. She has made it a point to attend each of these Arbor Day events, even as she herself has suffered with health setbacks. Her work has also included her volunteer work at Hinsdale Hospital, her leadership of one of our Boy Scout troops, and her work as a religious education instructor and curriculum writer for Our Lady of Peace and for Our Lady of Mount Carmel. She acted as grade level coordinator and gave generously of her time working with other instructors as they prepared to meet the needs of their students. She has been involved in community groups and has given freely of her time on behalf of our city and her neighbors. She has always been one to open her home to others, especially in their time of need. This is probably why so many now think of her in their daily prayers. Personally, I'd like to share a story of how I first came to work with her when I faced a crucial issue in my work early as, my tenure as an alderman. A number of years ago, we were suffering significant damage to the Carriage Greens Country Club. We had golf carts driven into the ponds, we had damage to the greens, we had flags disappearing. And there was talk by the owners of Carriage Greens that they were going to erect a fence between the property owners and the golf course. And that was something I didn't want, and that was something that Kathleen Minardi did not want. And like, well, I like to take credit for it, a lot of the work of gathering people was done by Kathy. Kathy contacted people in the Carriage Greens area, and we had 350 people who met at Carriage Greens with the management of Carriage Greens and with our Darien Police Chief. And at that time, the residents committed themselves to patrolling the, patrolling the golf course and finding who the culprits were, and we did, we caught the, the culprits. And as a result, the golf course stayed open, and that was all due to the, a lot of the hard work that this, this wonderful woman did. I know there are many who have been touched by her efforts and will help her celebrate as we honor her work tonight. She has definitely given of herself and has touched our hearts, so we return the gesture by giving her a bit of our hearts as we honor Kathleen Minardi with our Heart of Darien Award.
Heart of Darien, Kathleen Minardi, Arbor Day Program, March 2nd, 2020.
Kathy has prepared some comments as well, Mr. Mayor.
I'm Mike Minardi. You've met Kathy Minardi. We live at 8421 Glen Air Road in Darien, a great street. Kathy prepared some comments using her technology, so I'd like to read those. Mayor Marques, city council members, city department leaders, and city staff. I am humbled and filled with heartfelt gratitude. I was diagnosed with ALS, also known as Lou Gehrig's disease, in 2018, and as the disease has progressed, I've lost the ability to use my arms and legs, and I can no longer speak. However, thanks to technology, I was able to write this message of thanks using an eye-gaze system which has been a godsend for me. My husband, Mike, son Jim, our family, and our wonderful neighbors and friends have been incredibly supportive throughout this journey. Our Arbor Day tree chaplain, Father Gavin, visits me every week, and the health professionals I see at Massachusetts General Hospital give me real hope. I am truly overwhelmed by this recognition. I can't receive this without sharing this heart of Darien with all of my neighbors, friends, and family. You are all my unsung heroes for everything you so kindly do for me day in and day out. This award caused me to think about the heart, what does it mean to have heart? I thought about the Tin Man and the Wizard of Oz. The wizard gave him a big red heart, but as we already knew, the Tin Man always had heart because he was always nice and kind. People always ask me what they might do to help me. I am blessed to have a wonderful support group, and Mike and I are fortunate to have the resources we need to care for me. However, we have established a fund through the Tackle ALS Program at Massachusetts General Hospital, the largest hospital-based ALS research effort in the world. Every cent donated to Tackle ALS goes directly to research where many promising therapies are in the pipeline. Just Google Tackle ALS and look for Team Kathy Minardi, if you might be inclined to make a donation. Darien has always been, and will always be, a nice place to live. Mr. Mayor, thanks again for your support.
We would like to get a picture of Kathy surrounded by her friends, so would you come on up and gather around her? We'd like to get a picture.
A few roses here and a few thorns.
One, two, three. I'm going to take a couple more, okay? I'll make sure you guys all get pictures, okay?
You're welcome. Michael? Well deserved, and I think we need to thank Kathy's loving husband, Mike, who is not only her husband, but her chief caregiver.
Hello, my name is Heidi Ramirez, and I just want to remind everybody that Arbor Day is April 24th. It's going to be in Community Park, and it'll start promptly at 9:30, and I hope to see everybody there. Thank you.
Thanks, Heidi. What time did she say that was? Dan, are you going to help with the elevator? All right, I'd like to continue with our mayor's report. A census 2020 update. Since we met last, we continue to use public service announcements and other information in our direct connect. We wrote a letter inviting all community leaders of social groups, civic groups, educational groups, and service groups to assist us by using our information material in their publications, i.e. their school newsletter, their library newsletter, their church Sunday bulletins, and their outdoor message boards. And we've also, I've received a couple notices back, Chief Gorski told me that they would be advertising on their message board for us, and basically it just commit to, commit to be counted. We're going to have a terminal here at City Hall for resident use, and we're going to try to secure a banner at the corner of Cass and Plainfield Road, just one more thing to put on the corner of Plainfield Road. Update on the District 61 property. As many of you know, our comprehensive plan from 2006 included the development of what is now known as the Lay School property. There's 12 and a half acres there. And Brian Vanna and I went to a board meeting about a month ago, made a presentation to the board regarding the possibility of purchasing that property and turning it over to a developer for building condominiums, luxury apartments, retail, and a mall. Contrary to what people said, we were not going to tear down the Ole School. If anything, we were going to move it to a new location, and in some respects, we considered putting it in the middle of the mall. We received, we, we had a good reception to our presentation, let me put it to you that way. And from that point, they, they did ask us for additional information, and we committed to provide that additional information, but we looked to develop what was called a memo of understanding that would have at least committed them to following through on the process and allowing us to do an appraisal, to get a space needs analysis done, so we could see how many classrooms would have to be built onto their other building in order to take care of the 400 children at the school. We even had a architectural firm that was willing to do a conceptual of what the property would look like, and all we asked is that they agreed to that. If they were, if they did agree to it, we were going to bring that same memo of understanding back to our council here, and then we were going to ask our council for, for money for an appraisal. On February 25th, their board discussed the memo of understanding, and they were reluctant to sign that memo of understanding, which in effect, basically said that this project, this idea is pretty well, pretty well dead. We're, we're not going to ask you as a council to spend money on an appraisal or spend money on architectural design when the board won't even commit to the process. So I wanted to update everybody to let everybody know that. I know I did write Dr. Carlo an email, and I asked Dr. Carlo if he and his board president would meet with Brian Vanna and I, so that we could at least find out what was discussed that night, and what were the conditions for which they turned down this project. Dr. Carlo emailed me back. I received that email this weekend. He will, we will be scheduling a date, and hopefully we'll get a few more answers. Now, this doesn't mean that in the future, we may not pursue this again. They, someday the school district may come to the city and, and ask for us to look at this, but this is, this was done not to enrich anybody but the residents of the city of Darien. A mall with retail shopping would have increased our sales tax revenues, and it would have helped us out a lot in terms of continuing the programs that a lot of our residents are used to. But for the time being, the concept is dead, and we, we will not pursue it any further. With the board not willing to accept the memo, we have decided not to pursue it anymore. And as I said at the start, if the board chooses not to follow, not to do this, that's fine, we accept that, and that is their property. There's a lot of feelings that people have for that property and that school, and we respect that, and I respect their decision. I want to give you an update on Darien Fest.
Go on, quick question.
Sure.
What were the results of the, was there a vote then? What were the results of the vote? Was it split, or was it?
From what we understand from Doc, well, Brian got the email.
Yeah, the, what we sent to them was the memo, the memorandum of understanding with, what I understood, they were going to review it that evening and send it to their meeting the, the subsequent month in case they had discussion or they wanted to change it. So I don't know exactly the vote, but the, the email I had said nobody on their board is interested in, in signing it. That's why we're hoping, again, to get some more information as we can sit down with them.
Right. And again, we saw, this was, this is not something that I developed or conceived of. This was something that was part of our comprehensive plan from back in the early 2000s, and while that plan showed a community center and other buildings, we were looking at luxury apartments, we were looking at condos, and we were looking at retail. Drew Mitchell from Holiday Properties came in, he indicated to us that we could have a mall there with possibly two or three restaurants, a gathering area, and I said, would you even consider putting the Ole School right in the middle of that development, so that it becomes the highlight of the development? And he said that would be a wonderful idea, because it would preserve the Ole School as well as make it more available to, to people that live in that area. So there were a lot, there were a lot of naysayers, people who said we were going to tear down the school, we're going to tear down the Ole School. None of that was true. The motives were primarily to create a new area for the city and to increase our sales tax base, and for now, we'll move on with other projects in the city. Darien Fest. Just to give you a brief history, as you know, the community park, it's been the home of Darien Fest for a number of years. The Chamber of Commerce had a meeting back in October with the Park District Executive Board, and there were discussions with regard to use of the park again, and there were several factors that weighed against the chamber using the Darien Community Park. With that, the chamber pursued a discussion with District 86 to have the Darien Fest on Clarton Hills Road and on the football field in front of the school. I talked to the superintendent, who indicated to me that there was going to be a lot of construction going on for the next three years, so that was out. With that, they went over to Eisenhower Junior High, and they talked about having it over there where the rides would be on park, and the, all the events would be behind the school by the baseball field, and the school district discussed it, and due to the fact that liquor would be sold, even if it was sold on the street, the school district said no. At that point, the chamber looked at a piece of property across I-55. If you're familiar with where our Public Works facility is, right next to it is the Sterling Bay property, right next to that is 12 acres of land called the Windgren Property, which is owned by the Forest Preserve District, and there's about 12,000 square feet that's been cleared. We went over there, took a look at that property, and Meyer Amusements, who set up the rides, said they could not set the rides up on the terrain, it was too uneven, and so that property was out. So I met with April Patalik, the chamber CEO, and I told her, I think, I thought she should write a letter making a formal request to the Darien Park District for use of the community park and/or Westwood Park. She sent that request last week. She received a return from the executive director, who told her that the only available location that they would allow the chamber to have would be the parking lot of the Darien Sportsplex. And the chamber feels that with all the asphalt there and no greenery, it wouldn't make for a good location. At this point, I don't want to have another year go by where we don't have a Darien Fest, so I wrote an email, and I copied all of you on that email, to Stephanie Gregoni, the executive director, to April Patalik, the head of the Chamber of Commerce, and I invited both of them to come in with their other people and sit down at a table and let me moderate a discussion between the two groups, so that any differences that exist between the two groups, we could work those out and possibly secure one of those parks as a location for our Darien Fest. And that meeting has not taken place yet. My email went out on Friday, and I haven't received anything back yet. I know April is willing to... I know April is willing to meet. I haven't heard back from Stephanie. She told me when she was back in the office, she would get ahold of me. So right now, we're waiting to have that meeting. The Chamber is committed to having a Darien Fest, so I, it's my hope that we find a location and hopefully, we can utilize either Westwood Park or Community Park for our Darien Fest. And I'll update you on that as time passes. I know a lot of people in our community are concerned about the coronavirus. Yesterday, I spent one hour on the phone in a conference call with 117 other mayors from suburban Cook County, DuPage County, and Coller Counties. We spent one hour with Mayor Lori Lightfoot of the city of Chicago. We heard from her Commissioner of Public Health, from her Chicago's Director of Communications, Chicago's Department of Emergency Management, and Mayor Lightfoot herself. And the city indicated that they would be willing to be an information resource to assist all the suburbs. All the information covered in the conference was, call was relayed to Karen Ayala, who is Director of the DuPage Health Department. She is scheduled to provide additional information to our city managers, and Mr. Vanna will be attending a meeting Thursday at the DuPage Mayor's and Managers Headquarters in Oakbrook, and she'll hear how we're going to, she will work with us based on the information we received. I like to emphasize that the risk factor in our area is low. Mayor Lightfoot and her team have been dealing with their emergency plan since last summer, anticipating a flu-like virus from China. They were putting, they put money and effort into the works last summer, so they are well ahead of the ballgame here in meeting the needs of not only Chicago, but the suburban areas. And of course, all of us are putting out information, and all of us are concerned about the coronavirus. We came out on our direct connect. We provided some information the other day, which we got from the CDC, recommendations such as practice every day preventive actions such as performing frequent hand hygiene, using hand sanitizer soap, covering your cough and your sneezes, avoiding ill people, and staying home when you're sick. Just really basic stuff, and this is not only good for the coronavirus, this is good for the flu in general. They did not talk about people not coming to work. They talked about people who were sick staying home. If you have a fever, stay home. There was also a lot of concern last night about health, our healthcare providers, and do they have the materials they need to have to deal with patients who come into the hospital or our first responders, our police, our fire, our paramedics? When they respond to a situation, do they have the proper tools to deal with that? And we're looking into that as well. If you want additional information, you can go to chicago.gov/coronavirus, and that's, that website is updated daily. In addition to that, I received a news release today from Mr. Dan Cronin, who's the head of the DuPage County Board. And Mr. Cronin reiterates many of the same things we heard last night with regard to washing your hands, you know, hand hygiene, staying home when you're sick. And he's, basically has a website as well. You can go to coronavirusdisease2019informationfortravel, and you could visit ready.gov/pandemic to learn how to stay safe and what you need to know before and during a health-related emergency. So there's a lot of information out there. I wanted the council to be aware of all of that. I wanted the public to be aware of that. And I guess at this point, I'll ask if there's any questions. I know there's a lot of information to throw your way, and I wanted to update everything on these three areas: the Darien Fest, the census, the 61 property, and the coronavirus. Any questions?
They've had West Nile virus that's been out for a while, and what's the difference between?
Eighty percent, eighty percent of the people in China who've got the coronavirus never, never even had to go to the hospital. It starts off, it's like flu-like symptoms, sore throat, coughing, sneezing, chest congestion, headaches. Most of the cases that they've seen in the United States have not required hospitalization. People who've been diagnosed with it, several weeks later, they're doing better. And what's really critical for us as community leaders is to assure people that we are prepared to meet this situation, but at the same time, the risk in our area is very low.
I guess my question, I'm asking is, we've had, we've had the swine flu, we've had, we've had the West Nile virus, and I would think from the governmental administrative standpoint, that they've had their systems in place. So I just want to know, you know, what's different this time than all the other epidemics? I've never seen as much coverage or preparedness as I'm seeing this time around.
The, well, there are some differences.
Yes.
There are, there are cases in the United States that are not travel-related, where people haven't left the country, and so they're looking to see where, you know, where this was initiated. The other thing is the flu, there is a vaccine you could take for the flu prior to getting the flu that keeps you from getting a very serious case of the flu. This, there is no vaccine. In fact, last night, we were told that it's going to be over a year before there's a vaccine for the coronavirus. So there's, there is a difference there. But this is a flu. While the flu influenza as we know it has a fatality rate of 1 in 1,000, the coronavirus has a fatality rate of 1 in 100. So, so there's a greater chance.
Okay.
We are going to probably see more, and everything's fluid. And in 48 hours, all, you know, every time you open up your phone and you look at the news, additional cases have been found here, additional cases have been found there, and no one's saying that we're not going to have additional cases. We are going to have additional cases. It's that we are prepared, our healthcare people are prepared to deal with it, and our first responders are prepared to deal with it. But I think our goal is to assure people that we're ready to deal with it.
I recall also with West Nile, it was, we did receive a lot of questions. There was a lot of information at the time because it was new. So I don't know if it's a social media explosion now versus even when West Nile was out a number of years ago already, there was not the social media coverage. So that definitely I see more of. But anytime any of these have come new, and some people are afraid, I think it's kind of the same information that's come, you know, they try to get it through the local municipality so we can put the information out. So I see it about in the same as those previous, any kind of virus that might have come up.
They say the reason that it's affected the stock market as much is because we live in a global economy. There are 745 million Chinese that are not allowed to go to work, so their factories are empty, they're not producing. And the imports that we're getting from China now are based on what they've had in stock already, but there's nothing new being produced, and China produces 1/8 of the world's economy. And investors, Mr. Cronin probably knows more about this than I, they buy things based on the future, where things are going right now. There's some fear in terms of China not being able to provide the exports that they normally provide.
West Nile was transmitted by mosquitoes too, not by...
Person-to-person contact.
Right, person-to-person. So that's a huge difference.
There's a lot of information out there. I can give you the websites, but that chicago.gov/coronavirus is a good website. That's updated every day. And I'll send that to all of the aldermen so you have that. All right, the other item on our mayor's report is consideration of a motion to reappoint John Murphy of Alderson, Stirk, Murphy, Frazier, and McGrath. Motion to approve. Ted Shower, second by Lester Vaughn. Any questions or comments? If none, the roll.
Shower.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Clistic.
Okay, aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
It takes us to a city clerk's report. Joanne.
I have one item, Mr. Mayor. Meet and greet will take place with Mayor Marquez on Monday, March 16th at 6:00 PM here at City Hall in the upstairs conference room.
I apologize, Dan. Did you want to make your presentation? No?
Yes, I figured if you wanted to do it under the mayor's report.
Rather than wait till the end?
I'm fine with it now. I know Bill has to pick up his daughters from, uh...
Why don't you go ahead, Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, City Council, and our viewing members at home and our audience. Let me pull this up for a minute here. It's all that modern technology. This will be brief. So what I'm going to do this evening, this is in reference to the item that's been moved to the new business offer this evening. And basically, on the new business, you'll have three options.
Just drag it, Dan, I think, and you can make it bigger.
Yeah, well, let me, that's not the one I want, though.
There you go.
Let me do this. All right, so what we're going to do is, basically, in front of you this evening is a motion that's directing staff to prepare an ordinance for a marquee sign or marquee signs. Obviously, this is still part of Case PZC 2020-01, and this is for the corner of Plainfield and Cass Avenue. It's on the northwest corner. I've got about seven slides here for you, so not to try to give everybody a...
Dan, can you enlarge the picture in the upper right?
Uh, yeah.
Do you say?
I'm sorry, yes.
Presentation, Dan.
We got it. Is that better?
Just go to...
Okay.
Yeah, go to slideshow.
Yep, I got it. Hold on, almost, there it is. My mouse, my mouse doesn't want to cooperate. Thank you. There we go. All right, so this is, if you're traveling westbound on Plainfield Road and northbound Cass Avenue, you would see the sign. The overall size of the sign itself is seven foot by 14, and an overall height of the base, four to five foot. Now, on all the bases, one of the things that we're incorporating in there is the city of Darien as well as a water feature. The water feature in either of the scenarios would basically encompass one sign or two signs. The water feature, again, is designed to basically flow out of the brickwork, so that's something that we've been working with Bill from Chicago Billboards and Aquascape. Again, this is a view for westbound Plainfield Road and northbound Cass Avenue. This is basically a two-sign configuration, and I skipped one here. This is southbound Cass Avenue. Again, the difference is, if there was only one sign, southbound Cass Avenue would not be able to view it or view it with simplicity. That's why there's two signs being proposed. This is an aerial view of a two-sign configuration looking down. A single-sign configuration, once again, looking down. This is a picture that's similar at 103rd and Cicero Avenue. It's a seven-by-14 sign with a four-foot base. You can see the line, and this, the sign is similar for the purpose of the location. If you look at the location, there's been comments in proximity to where the proposed sign or signs would be. So again, this is just an example of another sign in another town. This is the Bowling Brook sign. The Bowling Brook sign and for, Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, was that seven by?
Six by 12.
Six by 12, with a four-foot base or three, five-foot base? With a five-foot base. And that's it. So what the options are, and I'll take any questions, is number one was to direct staff to prepare an ordinance for one marquee sign, including a landscape water feature. Number two, or option two, was to direct staff to prepare an ordinance for two marquee signs and a landscape water feature. The third option was to direct staff to prepare an ordinance for one marquee sign and install the infrastructure for a future second sign and a landscape water feature. If we go to option number three, option three with the sign, the sign would come back to City Council at such time. So if we were to install the infrastructure and go with one sign, you would never see the infrastructure. It will be basically buried with decorative rock, if you want to say. More than happy to answer any questions in regards to this.
A couple of quick questions. On your pictures you're showing, Dan, I noticed all the pictures were sort of from across the street. Do you have any of someone in a vehicle driving by?
That's what we tried to simulate was a 3D view, and I'll go back.
Yeah, it's across the street.
Right, well, it's across the street. It's a little difficult to stand in the middle of the intersection, take a picture, you know, or just put that in there. So we tried to capture enough. But if you look at the relationship between the height of the building, which is at 24 foot, and if you look at the pedestrian sign, which is approximately 12-foot high, if that gives you a little more perspective.
I think so. And then on the, in Oak Lawn, did you guys reach out to see if there's like any more accidents or any concerns from there, or is that just an example? I think one gentleman brought up a concern of potentially more accidents, and just, you know, confirming that that was brought up, or...
We did not inventory the amount of accidents, and if I could defer to Bill. Bill, why don't you come up here for a minute, maybe?
Because I got some Twitter feed from accidents at that intersection I can share, so definitely I've seen, you know, there's a safety concern aspect of that.
Maybe you can answer that, Bill?
We've operated the sign on 103rd and Cicero over a year, and we have not had any feedback from any of the council members or the chief of Police Department saying that there's any correlation of increased traffic accidents due to the sign being there.
Okay, but you're also selling the sign, so I don't know if you'd actually give me the straight answer to that, right? So, the good smoking's good for you.
We would have been notified if there was any type of problem with the sign, and we operate, you know, quite a few signs, and we would have known if there's a direct correlation, safety issue.
Again, as a follow-up, we could always, you know, report on that as well, regardless of what the motion is, because everything has to come back to City Council for ordinance.
A gentleman mentioned 25-year lease. So I'm in favor of this, but the concern I have is, say all of a sudden, you have 50 accidents, you know, over six months, and there's a crowd of people coming out of here. Is there a way to get out of that lease if you had to remove it for whatever reason? Or is that 25 years, you know, more than a 15-year mortgage that we're stuck with that? What's the conditions on the contract? Maybe I'm getting ahead of myself there.
That's right. The reason why we have a longer-term lease is because after 10 years, the media has to be changed out. So, so we would have to go through like two cycles. But if there was a direct correlation of the sign with, you know, increasing problems, i.e. accidents or anything, we would, we would definitely revisit that because we are all about safety. And so we would look at that and say, you know, if there's a problem with this, we would look at removing the sign if that was a direct correlation.
So then there, you could put in a buyout clause if there had to be after five years or something happened.
In the agreement, what we could do in the agreement is if it's more comfortable for the City Council, is put a clause in there, subject to traffic accidents or something to that, safety concerns that may need to be revisited with the Chicago Billboards or wherever.
Yeah, because you guys have an investment of money putting into this too, so, you know, that, you know, you know, make sure, one year and all of a sudden, you're out, so...
They are the investment company altogether. The city has zero funds that are being contributed to this, so I just wanted to make that clear.
Yeah, if they have some type of clause in case something happens or someone decides, you know, in five, 10 years, that isn't...
Right, and with this ordinance, there's also a plat of easement and a lease agreement, although the lease agreement is zero, the terminology is used as a lease agreement, which will have all of the conditions, including what you just mentioned. We'll make sure we craft that into that for our final, you know...
Is it possible to do?
Is it possible to do a five-year to ten-year agreement? Is that not an option?
No, just because we don't, if we had the media out there, we would have to remove it. It's just, all of our agreements are long-term, just, you know, just based on what the shelf life of the signs themselves.
So if you move, if you're moving your equipment after ten years, why can't you do a ten-year lease?
We're not moving the equipment, we're just exchanging it out. The infrastructure's there, we just have to take out the panels, the power supplies, and all the, all the diodes and everything. So basically, the, of the guts of the sign itself, but the actual infrastructure itself would stay there.
Mr. Gay started in the evening by mentioning that there wasn't a traffic study done. Is that something that you typically do at all your properties, or is there a reason why the traffic study wasn't done on this, on this project?
We've never done a traffic study, and IDOT, they're the, they're the governing body that says that, that digital signs are okay, and they, and they took that from the federal government. So we go by the IDOT rules and regs of timing, no flashing, so we've never done a traffic study.
I had the same concern, but I know we've done modifications to signs, for example, where the, across the street from Pete's, and we didn't do a traffic study for, with regards to like small variations and stuff, so a lot of times we don't, you know, if there's already a sign there or this or that, we don't, we haven't done a variation, traffic study.
But there is no sign there right now, so this is a brand-new. If it's okay, can I ask a question? The size of the sign, because it does seem, you know, quite large, is, is that just what you deemed, I mean, I was reading the notes and everything, is the appropriate size for that particular space in the, in the intersection, or could a smaller sign be, be done?
Actually, there'll be two parts to this answer. I'll answer it first. There was bigger signs introduced at the planning and zoning. With some of the comments that came back from the planning and zoning, we looked at it, we looked at the whole thing again, we were out on site several times, looked at the orientation, also looked at the sizes. The sizes that are in place right now, one is a seven by twelve, and the other one is a six by, a six by twelve. Those are the optimal signs to capture the audience's reading or readability, if you want to say. Bill, you want to add today?
Actually, it's a seven by fourteen, and so we spent a lot of time onsite analyzing traffic and just the overall size of the property itself, and you don't want to be too overwhelming for that property. You have to have a two-to-one ratio, six by twelve, seven by fourteen, eight by sixteen, nine by eighteen, ten by twenty. So for that particular property, the seven by fourteen is, you know, based upon where you're viewing it, that would be the, the smallest you'd want to go there, and eight by twelve would frankly be way too large for, for that site.
And then how do you determine, because I think originally when we first went down this road, it was meant to be like a, a community information sign, but based on everything I read, it's, sounds like it's going to be, you know, really more advertising than community information, based on the ratio. I think you say there's like ten, is it eight, ten seconds blurbs, or ten, eight-second?
Eight, ten-second.
Okay, so out of the eight spots, one will only be for the city of Darien.
That's correct, and the other spot would be for Dunkin' Donuts, the pizzeria, and Brookhaven.
Okay, and then, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, just so everyone understands, the other is with Dunkin' Donuts, as well as the proposed pizzeria place, those two properties get their advertising for free. Brookhaven Plaza, the marketplace, will get their advertising at, that, that one's free. Wait, for the, for the marketplace? For the market, the grocery store, excuse me. The grocery store was free. Everything else within Brookhaven would be at a discounted rate, so like a non-for-profit type of rate. Anybody outside of that parameter, let's say it was Starbucks across the street, they would be paying the going rate for advertising. So that's some of the negotiations that's making this part of the lease somewhat realistic, if you want to say, especially working with John Manos.
But, Dan, in addition to that, community groups like the Lions Club, Women's Club, Rotary, could all have advertisements on there for a discounted price for a shorter period of time.
Correct, that's a nonprofit, nonprofit pricing.
Which, which in my mind was one of the things that kind of drove this, because we got, we received a lot of complaints about our communication vehicles, we revamped, we hired a new company, new newsletter, new social media, and we really looked at this as an opportunity to provide information to people who may not go on their computers every day. And if the service groups, civic groups, all want to pay a discounted rate to be on that, I think that's a wonderful idea, plus it's an entryway into the city of Darien.
Correct, and that was some of the artistic portion of it, was to be able to create this landscape facade, you know, with flowers all year long, which will be replaced courtesy of Chicago Billboards in conjunction with the water feature as well, just to really dress it up, and the city of Darien, that's why it's also, the base is a little bit higher, that city of Darien almost takes up a foot in height by the time it's all said and done.
What are the advertising costs? Like, I'm, I'm thinking, it's a great premise, but can these community groups afford to buy it, the advertising, because it's not like it's going to be free?
That's correct, so the non-for-profit rate, you know, if the Boy Scouts come to us and say, hey, you know, my sons are in Boy Scout, we don't have a, we have no budget, so if they say, you know what, we need it for a week, we're going to give them a really good rate. So our, our rates, we have to establish those still, but they have to get rated by an outside agency, so, you know, it might be, you know, seven to nine hundred dollars at discounted rate, that might be half, and then if you're taking it for a week, then you could kind of, you know, figure out what that is. But we work with a lot of non-for-profits, the Girl Scouts, the Boy Scouts, and all the other organizations that don't have an operating budget.
So the pricing in Bowling Brook could be different than the pricing in Oak Lawn, and, and different than the pricing here?
It, it all depends on the longevity of the, of the lights, if there's anything that's obscuring the sign. So there's a lot of different factors that come into, like, the pricing itself, but they're very comparable, I would think.
Mike?
Yeah, one question I have, Dan. I know, as we're working through the budget now, we're adding quite a bit for landscaping, improvements, and maintenance, saying we're not satisfied with the way, the way a lot of the maintenance is handled. I think the implication is that they will be maintaining this, but will we be able to dictate our standards so that, again, right now, we're coming back, and even the stuff that we've done, we're saying we're not happy with it, so we need to spend a lot more money in the next year maintaining it? Will we be able to basically govern their maintenance of it, or is it something that's going to come back and we're going to have to spend money on maintaining it in the future?
The answer to that is, they're going to do a better job of maintaining, because they're also going to be replacing, and again, when I say replacing, through certain seasons, and I'll let Bill expound on the different plantings, I'll call it, throughout the season.
We take staff recommendations, obviously, we would like to have some screening, you know, we're cognizant that the folks that are coming from the Dunkin' Donuts, they would see the back of the sign, so you're on screening, so you went to see the back, you know, the sign itself, but we would take recommendations from staff as to what they might like to see out there, but we do seasonal things such as mums and tulips and whatnot, so it has a, a seasonal effect, but we also have to take in consideration salt, water, and those, we don't like to be replacing things every single year, that's why we, you know, choose, you know, plants, and they're going to be hardy enough to actually, you know, withstand, you know, water droughts and whatnot.
And this is a landscape architect that basically puts the plants in, just to echo off of Bill's comments, arborvitae's are what's going to be basically behind the signs, or sign, sign or signs. In the front, you know, yes, the goal was, whether it's, I'll call them hedges, some type of hedges, flowers, and probably, and replacing those flowers with maybe twice a year, whether it's, I'm, I'm not a flower person, so whether it's roses or daisies, you know, whatever the case is, something pretty and something that's inviting, you know, and I think we've, we've done a pretty good representation of that up and down Seventy-Fifth Street as well.
So you're committing, you're just not going to come back at the City Council for additional funding for-
I will not be coming back to City Council for additional funding, because I'll make sure that's in the contract as well. You got that?
So any breakage on the sign you guys cover, correct? We, we cover all maintenance, breakage, or anything of that nature, yes.
Dan, going back to probably two weeks before we started talking with the company, one of the things we talked about, and it was a, a discussion that really came out of the council's discussions for more information, we had talked about maybe getting the easement and putting on our own sign, and doing just a city sign and just city information, and obviously, that, that, even the, the construction was very expensive, the computerization was very expensive. This came about, maybe about, I want to say, a couple, just a couple of weeks later. So what kind of, when you were doing this really early on, what kind of estimates did you have if we were going to just construct a city informational sign-only, where we would own it and run it?
About a quarter, quarter of a million, just for the signage, you know, without any type of water feature, if we're going to add the water feature in, obviously, you're talking probably another fifty thousand dollars, you know, landscaping, maintenance, the maintenance itself can be probably close to ten thousand, seven to ten thousand dollars a year. Yeah, I'm not sure what's-
Well, we just thought this was a more cost-effective way, obviously, to get our advertising out, our information to residents, while still not having that upfront capital cost. That's why, at least initially, it came up, and we thought, hey, this is a pretty good idea, you know, in terms of budgeting and not having to pay for it, because I think we were to the point where, even if it wasn't at this site, we did have indication to start looking at what it would cost for some community sign somewhere in town.
That is correct, and again, this is somewhat of the last opportunity, especially with Dunkin' Donuts, Dunkin' Donuts coming in there, they usually have a right to say on what's going on with the property, I'm not sure how that lease is exactly structured with John Manos, but going into it, the lease agreement's all worked out, that Mr. Manos was willing to give us a lease, and the city would be, you know, responsible for the lease in a three, three-way party agreement, if you want to say, you know. We also looked at a marquee sign, it's been mentioned, putting one for on the City Hall, and while that's a great idea and concept, the problem is, is when vehicles are doing forty miles per hour, and that they really don't have the opportunity to stop anywhere and read that. So by the time you're going past it, and what that say, you know, unless you have the opportunity to stop, such as a stoplight, that's what some of the drive was. Also, there was some conversation about signs on Seventy-Fifth Street and Cass Avenue, considering that was a bigger intersection. Those signs over there, would they really have to be bigger, more enormous, and they really wouldn't be capturing anything because of how wide the whole intersection is? You'd probably be looking at two signs, or larger signs, at least on two corners. So just wanted to put that.
Bill, did you have a discussion yet with the Darien Park District at all?
We had an initial discussion, yes.
Okay, because I know they were looking at the possibility of one at Seventy-Fifth and Fairview, and the possibility of one over by the Darien Sportsplex off of Plainfield Road. Is that true?
Yes, they, they gave us a whole list of locations, and those are the two that, that they kind of pointed out, but we haven't, we haven't done anything with it at this point.
So a quick question, Dan, you just led, led me into the point, when you mentioned the city, when you're driving by, it's, it's hard to see, so with regards to, you know, taking time, you're driving fairly quickly by, and when I was Municipal Services Committee, one of the things we, we stressed and pushed for was sixty seconds minimum on a sign, because you don't want to be changing all the time. So is there a variation for this location? Because I'm reading like every ten seconds, there's a new advertisement, or, because like Kinsdale South, we went every sixty seconds, Chucks, we made them change from fifty seconds to sixty seconds. So is there a variation, or are these every minute that changes?
These are per ten seconds, every change is per ten seconds. I'll have to double-check to make sure, but it was, my understanding, our signs currently are at a ten-second interval, for example, at Chucks, and I'll double-check.
I don't, I thought, I thought it was like a minute, I'm not sure, because it was always a big-
High school changes its sign.
Yeah, it was like a big, couple meeting discussion was every seconds, and I think we like went to Chucks and had them go quicker, slower, whatever the case would be.
They were in violation, there were several, several of the companies, or several of the organizations that currently have these type of displays, they were in violation. Unless I'm getting my thoughts mixed up here, I'd have to-
Yeah, yeah, I'm just wondering, are they asking for a variation, or will they be applying to whatever the city code is currently?
The variation, the variation is for setbacks-
Okay.
And for size.
Okay, so they'll meet the current requirement for whatever.
IDOT requires no more than ten seconds, and there'll be no flashing in and no flashing out, or it'll be ten seconds, and then a new one, from what I understand.
It's actually, IDOT says no less than ten seconds.
Less than ten.
No less than ten.
Okay. So every, every eighty seconds, Darien will have an announcement on that board?
Within every, one within eighty seconds, correct.
Right.
So going back to that, my concern is that it will get drowneded out, the Darien message, which is, to me, like my, you know, end game here, my goal, is going to get drowned out with the advertising. I don't, I don't want to count on, as much as I want our community groups to be able to promote their events, organizations like the Pancake Breakfast coming up with the Lions Club, they might not be able to afford to do that. So if they can't buy the space, then it's going to be for advertising. So then, you know, it'll be, one of eight messages are applicable to the residents, the rest are advertisements promoting, like, you know, steaks on sale at Brookhaven, or the coffee special at Dunkin' Donuts. So is there any way to modify the agreement where it allows for more space dedicated to the city or to community events versus just one per eight message?
Right now, it's just one per eight, and so we would only have the ability of selling, say, six of the eight, and ninety percent of our advertisers are local, so they're going to be, you know, dedicated to, you know, businesses that are local. In the event, if the, if the city has an event or two that, you know, is very, very, you know, pressing, such as the census, and they needed to do an extra push, if we have some availability in there, we might be able to, you know, squeeze another ad in there, if there's, if there's not a, you know, bona fide paying advertiser for that slot.
Bill, what's the average length of, of a stoplight at that intersection?
What's that?
The average length of time that you're stopped at that intersection, when you get a red light? You said, in one of your previous presentations, you said, you timed it out so that if a car stops and it's going westbound on Plainfield Road, they're, they're at that red light long enough to see a whole cycle of-
I don't know the specific time on that, on that corner, but they're typically anywhere between, you know, eighty or eighty or more. That's just the typical, so we'd like to get a full cycle if you're at a stoplight, but I don't know the specific-
Okay.
-time element on that corner.
I know, Mayor Marquez, I know it varies, it's all activated by sensors within the roadway, and then there are any traffic times, it's all programmed basically for northbound, southbound, Cass Avenue, so there is probably up to minute and a half of wait time.
One last question. I know on Oak Lawn, you have all businesses around there, but across the street, I think that's Ted's Ward, you do have some residents there, so is there any concern from any residents that might have any bleeding or anything from, from the back, or does it dim down a little bit at night, like your cockpit module in your vehicle, when it's, when it's dark, it dims down, and when it's light, it's brighter, so that you adjust the brightness with this as well when it's dark, so it's not like super bright, so we don't get any concerns from residents saying, hey, I can't sleep at night, there's lights in my face?
No, all the signs have photocells, so they are regulated at night, if there's any ambient light, if it's cloudy, it gets, you know, dark, so they are, they're constantly, twenty-four-seven, they are constantly, you know, being adjusted. And they're monitored twenty-four-seven, so there's a camera on the sign, twenty-four-seven, that's, that's monitored off-site.
Oh, okay. Any additional questions for Dan or Bill? Okay, this will be item A under new business. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Takes us to our city administrator's report, Brian.
No report, Mayor, thanks.
Department head information questions, any questions for the chief or for Mr. Gumbach? Moves us to our treasurer's report, Michael.
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, I'm requesting council's approval of warrant number nineteen twenty twenty-two in the amount of one hundred twenty-two thousand, seven hundred eighty-three dollars and eighty-six cents from the listed funds, payroll for the period ended February twenty-seventh, in the amount of two hundred seventy-seven thousand, thirty-two dollars and eighteen cents, for a total to be approved of three hundred ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred sixteen dollars and four cents.
Motion to approve. Alderwoman Sullivan, second by Alderman Belzak. Questions, comments? You have the roll?
Sullivan?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Gusterson?
Aye.
Kenny?
I appreciate, and I state specifically, to hear the discussion from the committee, and I appreciated it. I would make one recommendation. Professionally, I negotiate a lot of contracts, and I think the way, I appreciated some of the comments about terms and clauses on the lease. I think it's very interesting that the lease, being at the previous committees, that it seems a very odd lease. There was some concern about liability that the city may encumber because of the way that it's structured. I think if we really want to understand, you know, who's on the hook, what are the risks, ask someone to sign on terms and conditions, taking liability. If we are concerned as a community that we may have more traffic accidents, there will be increased litigation. And so I think if we want to understand where the risks are, simply ask someone to put, accept that risk. And I would recommend highly to you that in this negotiation, if everyone believes this is fine, that there are no risks, there are no liabilities, then I think it's incumbent upon the person who is funding it is going to assume and indemnify the city from all risk associated with the sign. Because if we do have increased accidents, one fatality, one major injury could be a multimillion-dollar lawsuit. So if we're not concerned about that, if those are not concerns that we need to be concerned about as a community, simply require that we be indemnified and provided in lease terms. And that will end up having to drive what's really at stake here. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, just to follow up on that, there is a clause in there where insurance is mentioned, and the insurance will have to be provided by Chicago billboards.
Okay. Thank you, Dan. Yes, sir. Come forward, please. We just need your name.
Mayor Council, my name is Matthew Stafford. I live at sixteen oh six Seventy-first Street in Darien. I'll be honest, I just, I, that intersection has been an eyesore forever, and I'd love to see something there. This sign just doesn't seem like something, I go through that intersection every day, multiple times a day. I don't feel like I ever sit at that intersection at a stoplight for more than thirty to forty seconds. So I feel like when I do see the ads, I'm going to see ads for the Dunkin' Donuts, the Brookhaven, and the new pizzeria, which I can also see with my eyes right there, I'm well aware that they're there. And I've got a one-in-eight shot of getting notified about something that has to do with my town. Now, I'm somebody that do, I do follow it on social media, but I know there are a lot of people that don't, so that is nice, but it just seems a little crazy to have a twenty-five year commitment to a sign that's going to give somebody a one-in-eight shot of finding out something we want them to see as a village, and seven out of eight, they're going to see an ad for a building that is right in front of their eyes, or potentially a business out of town that's going to send them further down the road. Because I could totally see coming southwest on Plainfield, if I'm one of the restaurants down in Woodridge, or the pizzerias in Woodridge, that's a perfect spot to put your signage. So I think we may end up just sending people out of town to begin with, so that's it. Thank you very much.
Takes us to old business, they're being done, we go to our consent agenda, and again, what was item A is now under new business. So item A is consideration of a motion to approve a resolution for the twenty-twenty City of Darien zoning map for publication. Item B, consideration of a motion to authorize the purchase of ammunition from Keesler Supply in the amount of six thousand, three hundred twenty dollars and fifty-seven cents, and Ray O'Hara in the amount of one thousand, eighty dollars. Item C, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution to approve an intergovernmental agreement between the Illinois Office of Controller and the City of Darien for access to the Controller's local debt recovery program. Item D, consideration of a motion to approve an ordinance abating property tax heretofore levied by ordinance number zero, or O twenty-eight dash twelve, in the amount of two hundred ninety-nine, two hundred ninety-nine thousand, one hundred seventy-five dollars. Item E, consideration of a motion to approve an ordinance abating property tax heretofore levied by ordinance O eleven eighteen, in the amount of three hundred eighty-three thousand, seven hundred dollars. And item F, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution rejecting the bid for foundation repairs consisting of waterproofing and restoration of the Ole School. Motion to approve. Alderman Belzak, seconded by Alderman Kenny, and the vote.
Belzak?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Consent agenda is approved, takes us to new business, they're, under new business, we have the previous item that was under the consent agenda. It's consideration of a motion to review three options and direct staff to prepare an ordinance for marquee signage and a landscape water feature. Motion to approve.
Are we just voting on the option, or are we voting on-
You're specifically directing staff to prepare ordinance for the marquee sign.
Under each, under individual options.
Under individual options.
So we're trying to get a consensus.
Yeah, we're trying to get a sense of which, which one you like.
Okay.
I would prefer, right. The goal of this is that to get a major, a good feeling or a good representation of what the city council is looking for, whether it's going to be option one, and again, that's for the council to direct staff to, you know, prepare the ordinance for one marquee sign with the water, with the landscaping. Option number two was to direct staff for two marquee signs. And option three was to direct staff to prepare an ordinance for one marquee sign and install the infrastructure, and infrastructure only, for a future second sign. That second future sign, under option three, would come back to city council when and if they deemed it was appropriate to put that second sign in place. If not, the infrastructure stays buried for infinity, if you want to say, and it'll be covered with decorative rocks, so you'll never see it.
Maybe, Tom, you can give a little overview, because it went to the committee.
Right.
And that'll be helpful.
Motion first.
We don't have a motion, we don't have a person-
I'm a little confused on the motion.
Yeah, why are we having a motion, though? Are we discussing, I mean, the motion's just to discuss, giving us-
It gives you the opportunity to discuss after it's been brought to the table.
Then I will move for option three, which is to put up one sign.
With the infrastructure?
With the infrastructure for a second sign.
So you're going to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve that, that we prepare ordinance in accordance with option three.
We have a second.
Second.
Okay, now we can talk.
Now we can have the discussion. We have a discussion on Tom's question.
So, at municipal services meeting, we had a long, long discussion in regard to this. And there were, there were a lot of concerns about the size of the sign, and putting up two signs that are going to be there for twenty-five years. That's a long time, as we've already talked about. I was in favor of the third, the vote on the one sign was two-one in favor of one sign. The vote on two signs was one-two against having two signs. Like I said that right? I'm, I'm in favor of option three, because I think it's important that we do this, and there is no cost to us, out of our, Mr. Corrin's not going to complain about a zero cost. And although we are only getting one out of eight, we still are getting fifty, what did I say, fifty seconds every hour, no. Yes, fifty seconds, or fifty times we'll show up every hour. So we're getting five hundred seconds an hour of our, our information out there. You're right, the other option, if we choose not to do this, and would be for us to spend somewhere between two hundred and five hundred thousand dollars and do it ourselves. And I don't think anyone has a stomach for that right now. So I am a little concerned that two signs would be intimidating, they're both very, very big. As I said at the meeting, the back wall behind you is about sixteen feet, so this is only two feet smaller than that. It's big. So if we're going to do this, I would like to do one with the option of two, and we can look at this two years from now and go, you know what, it's an overwhelming success, there's no problems, let's put up a second sign. Or we can say, no. So that's the reasons behind what I wanted, or was in favor of at that. But again, our meetings took a very long time, and it was mixed, and I know the, Mr. Mallard's isn't here, but Brian is, I believe, at their zoning meeting, it was five-three in favor of one sign, and I want to say it was two-six against two signs. So it seems to me that between planning and zoning and municipal services, there seems to be more of a favor of one sign than two.
Maybe I'd like to add anything to that. We're talking one sign with the infrastructure for the second sign in the future, if needed.
Dan, could you clarify infrastructure, so we all are hearing the same thing?
At a different location, right? It's the same location, they mount it as part of the sign.
Why don't you present that to us conceptually, Dan?
As far as the infrastructure, what would happen is the infrastructure consists of a pole base that gets sunk into the ground so many feet. It's obviously something large that holds up the actual panel itself. This post base would be flush with the grounds, or called a couple inches above the ground. It'll be incorporated into the landscape feature slash water feature, which will have something temporary over it, or permanent, such as decorative rock is probably the easiest way to put it. The electric, since electric needs to get run there, there'll be basically pipe that'll be capped, go into the termination of the commed pedestal or the circuit breaker box. And when and if, again, if that sign gets approved, it's simply a matter of putting wire into that pipe and hooking up onto the box and the sign itself.
Dan, let me ask a question. You showed a picture of what a two-sign aerial would be. Wall, wall. So with the, one buried and not visible, you now have that same configuration with the wall, correct?
Correct. So it'd still be a, in large landscape features, which, again, I don't think anyone is objective to a nicer landscape feature.
Would you have City of Darien on the one wall and the water feature on the other one? How does the water feature work?
Well, basically, the water feature itself is, encompasses the sign, or signs. The footprint for option three would capture the one sign, plus the imaginary second sign. So the brickwork will be for two signs in place.
Will you landscape so that doesn't look odd?
Yes. You know, whether it's a matter of, you know, putting more flowers, or perennials, or bushes, whatever the case is, to balance it out, yes.
Mike?
I just want to surprise Tom a little bit here. We are getting some discussion as far as, is ten seconds every eighty worthwhile? Because the discussion was, we want more communication, so if we want more time, another approach, and this is a totally different approach, and I'm not saying I'm in favor of this, Dan's thrown out the figure, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The other approach would be, we build our own sign for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, then we have control over whether it's ten seconds, or twenty seconds, or thirty seconds, and we can sell the advertising space on that. I'm sure that they're spending the same two hundred and fifty thousand we would. Granted, it would take us a number of years to recoup that, but then it would give us control over how much time we have in there.
I can't believe the treasurer, Corrin.
I'm just saying, it's based on the discussion of the amount of time, people are saying-
And this is on the record, right?
Did I surprise you, Tom?
We are on TV, right?
But we get our money back. I'm leasing the timeout, that's what they're doing. You don't think they're doing it for the good of man either?
And, and Brian, would that be something we could do? Can we as a city lease out advertising?
Yeah, there's, there's, John would know that, I mean, there's laws on that, but, you know, you would, you would, I could see certain problems with that, I'll have to talk through the city attorney with that.
The other thing, I would, if we were in charge of the advertising, they're in charge of creating the advertising. We don't go out and solicit with this sign, they do. If we owned the sign and we were going to sell advertising, then somebody here at city hall has to go out and make arrangements with people to do, to pay money for that. The other thing is-
Chase Bank, right?
We have the maintenance of it, we have the yearly maintenance, we have all the liability, everything's on our shoulders. And in tight budgets, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is just the sign, the water feature is another hundred thousand dollars. So, I mean, we're talking probably four hundred thousand dollars for doing it ourselves.
And we're talking about trying to get some sponsors for concerts, and April, if she comes on board, would do that. I'm always hesitant when the city's going to local businesses trying to sell something, because no matter what we say, somebody will think that it's not really a, it's a question. We're telling you, you have to, it just gets a little awkward as we're going to businesses for money or things like that. Not that we couldn't do that, because every CTA bus that goes by, there's advertising on it, park benches, you know, in municipal areas have that. So there are ways, bulletins, some towns do that, so there is probably a way to do that, but I envision that being a lot of work, you know, upkeeping the computer, doing those types of things, and programming the messages. So obviously, it would have to pay for itself, you'd have to include that.
You'd need a company to manage it for you, and then you'd be giving away half of, or a percentage of your profits on that.
It was just something we'd, I would not want to tell the council tonight until we've really looked into that a little more.
So when I look at the attachments to the agenda, and I look at the, you know, the way the base of the sign would be if it was a two-sided sign, so assuming option A three, which is what Tom's proposed, wouldn't it look incomplete? Wouldn't it look like something's missing initially? Like if the first, say, like, you know, you set it up and you have one sign, you know, set up for a potential second sign, to me, it looks like, it would look like something's missing.
If the city council wants to go with just one, basically just encompass the one sign, that's fine, you know.
No, I'm just saying, but like if we were to explore the option three, wouldn't it, it look like something's missing?
I don't think so. I mean, you know, if it's balanced out well with plantings, it's just, it's just another feature is what it boils down to.
Depends on how you landscape it.
Well, I need some clarification now. The, the base is not going to be built, correct?
The base will be built.
They say the base will be built.
Oh, you have a four-foot base?
The brick, on the brick, the water feature.
My understanding was just the underground stuff was being implemented, and the base would not be built.
For the sign.
For sign two.
For sign number two, the base of the sign and the electric would be buried. The actual water feature itself would be built for two signs immediately.
Okay, I think we're having some terminology differences. The, my view, the base is the four feet of brick that comes out that says City of Darien on it.
Okay, I'm not referring-
That is not being, when you say base, you're talking about the underground footings.
Let me refer to what it's, yeah, the infrastructure, let me refer to the infrastructure, and then the infrastructure is for the sign. So the second sign, the infrastructure would be the post and the electric. And we can refer back to your terminology as the base, the base being the actual water feature, which would encompass, as we had two signs. That makes, that makes sense?
Right, but there's not four feet of brick with nothing on top of it coming out of the ground.
Correct. There'll still be just four foot of bricks, City of Darien, whether it's on one side or two sides, whatever the case is.
feature is what it boils down to.
Depends on how you landscape it.
Well, I need some clarification now. The base is not going to be built, correct?
The base will be built.
Oh, you'll have a four-foot base?
The brick, on the brick, the water feature.
My understanding was just the underground stuff was being implemented, and the base would not be built.
For the sign.
For sign two.
For sign number two, the base of the sign and the electric would be buried. The actual water feature itself would be built for two signs immediately.
Okay, I think we're having some terminology differences. My view, the base is the four feet of brick that comes out that says City of Darien on it.
Okay, I'm not referring...
That is not being... When you say base, you're talking about the underground footings.
Let me refer to it as, yeah, the infrastructure. Let me refer to the infrastructure. And then the infrastructure is for the sign. So the second sign, the infrastructure would be the post and the electric. And we can refer back to your terminology as the base, the base being the actual water feature, which would encompass, as we had two signs. Does that make sense?
Right, but there's not four feet of brick with nothing on top of it coming out of the ground?
Correct. There'll still be just four foot of bricks, City of Darien, whether it's on one side or two sides, whatever the case is, incorporated with the water feature.
I'm still not...
See, I'm looking at the, can we pull up the pictures again?
My, my understanding from our meeting was that everything you would need to put up a sign, including the base, would be prepared, the footings, the electricity, all the underground stuff. And then if we chose to do a second sign, it would be built at that time, not, we're building the first four feet of it, but not putting the sign on top of it.
The signs, the sign will be going really inside of the, let me try to get this up right. The signs will be going inside the base or the water feature, not on top of the brickwork. They'll be inside.
I'm looking at the pictures, page 67 in the board docs, and I think this then is 60, 69, where it shows the landscaping, the sign, how the sign sits on top of the brick with the City of Darien written on it. So what, if, if option three is approved, will we be looking at, you know, the actual wall there with nothing on top of it? Or are we looking at just the one wall that where the sign, the one sign is sitting on top of?
See if I can zoom, I can't zoom.
While you're pulling it up, can I ask, it's John, right?
Bill.
Bill, I'm sorry. What other towns besides Bowling Brook? Do you guys do Bowling Brook, or? Okay, and Oaklawn? What other surrounding towns do you have?
Blackport.
Blackport, Hickory Hills, Coggin Ridge.
Yeah, one in Joliet, I think.
Joliet, I'm sorry.
So here's the two-sign configuration.
Thank you.
Okay, two-sign configuration, landscaping, the base work.
So define base. Underground or above ground?
Above ground. The base, and if I can get a, you know, the base is going to be a brick wall.
Right.
With the City of Darien on there once or twice, whatever the case is. The infrastructure is for the sign, post itself for the second sign, which will be buried along with the electric. Inside this brickwork slash base. Make sense?
You're saying the brickwork and the base, which would be above ground?
Brickwork and base is the same, the same thing.
Would be there for the second sign.
That is correct.
Dan, in that picture that you have up there, where with the one sign, with the one sign program, and the other one just being a wall with the buried infrastructure, which one of those walls has the sign on it?
One, that would be the southwest, which would be...
Can you go back and show us?
Yeah, let me go back to the configuration of the sign.
Which one of those walls has the sign?
Hold on, let me just... So it's going to be, that's what the sign will be with a one sign. Now, back to your question, it will be this one.
Along the one of the two?
Right.
But couldn't you do it without putting the brickwork up for the second sign?
You could. And the answer to that is could, but we tried to make it as economical as possible, and this is something that we talked about, where if they come out again later, it costs more. And again, we could not even put the, we don't even have to put the foundation in for, if we go with option three, it's all a mood issue, because then we're really picking option one.
You know, I think there might be a little, just a little confusion as to above grade and below grade. So if you'd like to go with option three, just because the construction is very...
Destructive.
Dirty, and we just don't have a landmass to do anything, we would opt to actually put an anchor bolt in the ground, at ground, at, at, at grade. So you would not see anything above grade. Now, the, the actual signs sit on, on the pole, so they're welded on the pole. The brick has nothing to do with the infrastructure integrity of the sign. It's just, you know, it's just there for aesthetics. Right. So when we're going through the construction and we're talking, you would build the anchor bolt, it's like a 30-inch base with concrete, and it would be at, at level, at, at ground. So you would not see anything. So you would be able to incorporate your, your landscaping around that, because there's not going to be any concrete in there. So you would be able to, you know, put your hardscape and your, and your landscaping all around it, with the exception of that 30-inch area. So everything else would be below grade, and so if, in the future, in the future, what would have to happen would, there would be a pad that would have to be poured, concrete, about 28, 28 inches, you know, in, in width, along the whole side. So it would be 12 feet. So you would have to tear up the landscaping, put concrete down, just to support the actual brick itself, if, if that was the option.
And that totally answers my question, but that would not be there until you chose to do a second sign?
That's correct. You would never see that, that base in the ground, and we would have to construct it with an anchor bolt, as opposed to having a pole and having a pole, that would not look good.
How often you guys get, put a second sign in after you've done the preliminary, putting the electric down? How often do you put in that second sign? So you're anticipating a second sign in the future. How often do you, do you see somebody's doing this, and then you guys come back and put the second sign in five years down the road?
In other words, how many have you done second signs somewhere else to a similar deal like this?
You know what? We have not. We have not. You know, this is, this is new. Just because that, you know, with the other two applications you saw, we just didn't have the landmass. You know, we were between the sidewalk and the property, i.e. in Oaklawn on 103rd at Cicero, and the one in Bowling Brook that you, you saw the other rendering from, that was on a right-of-way that was owned by, that is owned by the village of Bowling Brook. So we had to stay within that right-of-way. We're in the right-of-way on the opposite side of the sidewalk. So we just didn't have the landmass to put a second sign. This, this is a very small property, but it does allow you to have that second sign if, if that's an option.
Okay. If you diminish the size of the wall, let's say you put that base in, and you cover that up in your landscapers, and now you just have a brick wall with the one sign and your water feature, you still got, see the City of Darien on that? Is the City of Darien still on the brickwork with the water feature if you only have one, one wall there?
I guess the elevation of the wall is what drives it. It gets to a point where, right now, I think we have it at four foot, if I'm not mistaken, designed for five foot. So by the time we put City of Darien on there, that's almost a foot itself, just the letters. So you basically have a capstone, couple inches of room, the letters, couple more inches, then the water feature starts. So really, you start to diminish the aesthetics of it. The answer overall is yes. At what point does it become so miniature? Do you take down another foot?
What's the use of having a water feature? And from what I've understood, you're going to have rocks and water coming over that, the rocks. If you have no height there, why have a water feature?
Right. Exactly. That's why, that's why it's at five foot. And if we start going four foot, three foot, you're right, we shouldn't do it then.
See, I envisioned this, I envisioned item three as a wall, and on this side, it's the City of Darien, it was landscaped around there, and on this side, you have the water feature going around the whole thing. But you had nothing blocking where the said City of Darien. You show a water feature completely around that, that sign.
Well, our landscape architect, the way that he envisioned just base of the contour, that, that the water would, would go right to left and would be pondless, it would not have a pond.
Right.
So you're not going to have any pooling or anything in nature, so it would just go into a underground pit, which would be surrounded by rock. And that's what, that's what the folks at Aquascape suggested based upon the size of the property.
And we'll have a better diagram of the, you know, the details, if you want to say, of the wall and the perimeter. We just, right now, these are artists rendering, and again, everything will come back to city council, so please keep that in mind.
I mean, we need, what we need to do, though, is we have a motion and a second on the floor for option number three, which includes having the wall and the water feature in one sign with everything else for the second sign below grade. That's what, that's what we have on the floor right now as a vote. So I'd like to, I'd like to call the question on that. I'd like to have...
Before we do, quick question. The second sign is mostly for people that are going to be driving southbound on cast so they can read it, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Could you put the directional pictures up there, please, Dan?
And that happens to have the highest volume of traffic in that whole intersection.
The southbound.
It is.
But yet, we're talking about doing this and holding off on doing the second sign, and that first sign is going to be kind of off-centered, correct?
It was situated between the traffic light and the, and the light, light post that's on the corner. So do you have the survey, Dan, by any chance?
Yeah, I've got them. I know. It's going to be difficult to read, but...
It's situated so you're able to get the most effective northbound read on cast, and also to get a westbound read on Plainfield Road. That's, that's the way that we aligned it. And, you know, in addition, that there's, there's also a sanitary line, but regardless of sanitary line, we would not be building like a case on over the sanitary line itself, so that, that would not come into play.
You can't get that drawing, Dan?
Yeah, I've got it up here. It's... Actually, it's not, it's not, I can't get it back on the, let me... I'm trying to get the configuration 4D.
Does the sign stay centered whether it's option one or three? Because if option three, you'd have to offset it, assuming you're going to make the assumption of a potential second sign, but if we go with option one, you just have one sign right in the middle. Are they both going to be options?
Option three, the sign does not change location.
Okay, so it's in the middle.
It's in the same location.
Unfortunately, I can't get the PDFs back in here. Let me try one more thing.
What's the first slide? You can just kind of show the orientation of the sign, so...
It's the westbound one. You want the southbound, right?
So that would be the second sign?
Correct.
Right.
While he's doing it, so just the, the motion that's on the table, it still has to, this is just giving permission to proceed with, in, exploring it, it still has to come back to city council for a vote of yea or nay.
Yeah, but you, instead of having three options, you'll be voting on one.
What?
You know, so right now, we have a motion and a second to go directing the city to develop an ordinance based on option three.
Right.
Which is going to take, you know, attorney's time, Dan, that's the expense left. That's why we didn't want to do three, three options. So, you know, if somebody doesn't like the concept, it, it does no, you know, it doesn't do us any good for everybody to vote yes if there's a conceptual problem, because then all that does is, we continue, then we'll bring something back, spend money, bring something back that the council wouldn't want. So I think if, if the council's, you know, approving the motion, it is implied that you're supporting, you know, you're supporting the concept, and we want to bring you a final ordinance to approve.
Right, and it also gives the community a chance to come back and express their opinion if they choose to about the sign at another meeting.
Yeah.
It'll be an item on the agenda, which is open to discussion by the public, yes. It's not going to go back to a committee. It's going to be at council level.
Just following up on Mike's comments, if you're looking at $900 per month, you're looking at $86,400 per year, three years, it's paid off at 259, so it's actually not a bad business case.
Of exploring it, again.
Yeah, yeah, I was just looking at what's the payback on, on that.
I was just looking at addressing people's concerns that it's only 10 seconds.
We would have to hire somebody full-time and pay them.
I don't think you need somebody full-time, Joe. I mean, we do a lot of things around here without full-time.
Is Mike volunteering?
Yeah, he's volunteering. And it is a full-time job, right?
While he's figuring, while he's figuring that out, my, my, one of the things I've been thinking about with this whole thing, you know, safety is one, but we talk about how many people in the City of Darien are actually going to see the messages, one out of eight over that minute and 20 seconds? And how many of those people are coming through that intersection that actually live in Westmont that don't live in Darien? And how many people from, you know, Alderman, Gustafson, Ellsman, Sullivan's wards that are on the west, west side of town that rarely ever come, come through that intersection, you know, are, are seeing it, so...
Joe, if one more person sees that sign, gets, gets a message that doesn't get the message now, that's one more person. We, we try social media, we have a newsletter. Should increase sales tax revenue. And there are people who, and we have people who still don't get the message. This was intended for those people who might just go past that and see that, okay? To coin, Alderman Vaughn's comment, if you make one person better in the City of Darien, you make the City of Darien better. Well, plus, hopefully, it's going to increase sales tax revenue.
If I, if I, if I...
The advertising on there.
Well, then if I make one...
Sales tax revenue goes up, which right now, it's going down.
Well, then if I make one person, if I make one more person safer and didn't get into an accident tonight, then I've done my job. So there you go.
Um, can you, the gentleman next to me who are in municipal services mentioned that it also could be used as an emergency alert system, Amber Alert, other things. Can you talk like two seconds on that?
Our signs are available 24/7 through the police department, so they have direct dispatch to the signs, and all the advertisements go blank until they release the Amber Alert. So any, any type of emergencies, they have direct access to our sign.
And the police get to make the call on that. The police could make the call.
They make that sole call. That's not our choice.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. We've had time for discussion. I want to vote.
Can I make sure that I have the verbiage right first? What I've written down here is consideration of a motion to direct staff to prepare an ordinance for option three for the marquee sign and a landscape water feature. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
And the role?
Belzak?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Kenny?
No.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Clistic?
I'm in favor of option one, so no.
Five ayes and two nays.
Okay, so option three, we will come back with a ordinance considering incorporating option three. Thank you, Bill.
Will that include the, the buyout in the contract or whatever as well, looked at by Attorney Murphy?
Attorney Murphy would have to, yeah, he has to approve it. He'll develop the language.
The agreement in the plan, correct?
Okay. Okay. It takes us to questions and comments and announcements from the council. Mary?
I just would like to take a moment to thank Kathy Minardi, who was our Heart of Darien Award recipient tonight for her countless years of service to our community. She has truly been a radiant beam of light in our community, serving us in so many, many ways, most, most profoundly in her love of trees and her Arbor Day role, but has done, as Mayor Marquez talked tonight, so many other things as well. She has truly such, touched so many lives, as was present here today, and I'm very proud to have known, know her and to have worked with her, and I think that was just a phenomenal choice. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Just a reminder, Saturday night is our Darien Citizen of the Year banquet. I hope to see all of you there. We get to celebrate another individual who has given a lot to our community, Alita Pecknick. So we're hoping for a wonderful evening on Saturday evening. Alderman Belzak?
And this Sunday, Darien Lions Club is having a pancake breakfast at Eisenhower Junior High.
And that starts when, at 7:00? I think it's 7:00. Close till 1:00. Anything else?
This Sunday, I thought it was March 16th.
They have another one, Boy Scouts have March 16th.
Troop 101 is the following Sunday at the same location. Motion to adjourn. Alderman Sullivan, second by Alderman Kenny, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.